Garden City Plan. Commission meeting on Tuesday, June eighteenth, two thousand twenty-four at six thirty. Thank you for confirming audio. Looks like the video is working as well. I'll now call the meeting to order. For the record, we have Commissioner Smith, Wild Brown, and Shepherd here. And so let's go ahead and stand up for the Pledge of Allegiance. All right. So Planning and Zoning Commission provides for a public hearing for quasi judicial administrative land use decisions, appeals, and legislative actions specific to land use regulations. The format of the public hearing will follow the following procedure for each application. Presentation by the applicant, city staff report, public testimony, rebuttal testimony from the applicant, discussion of hearing among the commissioners, and then the decision. If you wish to give public testimony, there are some general rules to abide by. No person shall be permitted to speak at the hearing until the person is recognized by the chairperson to do so. The commission will not address those who speak out of order. If you have questions, you can ask them during your turn for the public testimony. And the applicant can respond to them during their rebuttal, or the commission can ask a question of staff during the discussion. Please sign up if you would like to speak and give public testimony. No person shall be permitted to testify at the public hearing unless such person has signed their full name and written their residential address on the signup sheet. Clearly state your name and address into the microphone at the podium when you are speaking. So staff, any changes to the agenda at this time?
Chairman, there are none by staff.
All right, thank you. So on to the consent agenda. So the consent agenda includes items of business which may not require separate discussion. From time to time, we may move an item to the consent agenda. Following the addition of any item to the consent agenda, we will vote on remaining items in one motion. At this time, I do see that there is one item that we could potentially move to the consent agenda. That would be CPA FY two zero two four dash zero 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 two, the Comprehensive Plan Amendments. The purpose of the amendment is to update the Fire District's Capital Improvement Plan in compliance with Idaho Code Section sixty-seven eighty-two oh eight as the basis of the enactment by the City Council of the City of Garden City for the Fire District Development Impact Fees for the Fire District pursuant to the Intergovernmental Agreement pursuant to Idaho Code Section sixty-seven eight-two-zero-four-eight. And then also additional changes. Now, staff, what are the additional changes in the comp plan?
Chairman, members of the commission. And there are a number that were identified in the staff report and online. But subsequent to that, there have been a couple of others that have been requested. Those are also online in a document. And including, the applicant has also requested to delete a reference to the when the fire stations were closed. And so that reference is closed or has been suggested to be deleted. And the acronym FACS was is incorrect in the current version, and that's been updated to be correct. And there are references to the ACHD Maintenance Property Yard at Thirty-seventh Street. And the word maintenance is suggested to be stricken. And so it's just the ACHD property at Thirty-seventh Street. And then there were a couple of pictures that still have placeholders when the comp plan proposed amendments went out, and those have been updated to be more formalized pictures.
Thank you. With the potential for moving it to the consent agenda, is there anybody from the public who would like to give testimony on this item? Seeing none, is the applicant present?
The applicant is present. Thank you. Ms. Wang just raised her hand.
Okay, sorry, Ms. Jeff. For the record, could you just state your name? And then if there's any items in particular that you would like the commission to discuss or anything that you would like to discuss that we would have this as a regular agenda item rather than on the consent? Excuse me, Mr. Gigray, can you hear us? You're on mute. Yep, we can't hear you. You're on mute.
Can you hear me now, sir?
I got you.
Okay, for purposes of the record, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission and staff, my name is Bill Gigray, the third. I'm with the law firm of White Peterson, Gigray, and Nichols in Napa, Idaho. Our address is fifty-seven hundred East Franklin Road, Napa, Idaho, Suite two hundred. I am appearing representing the applicant, North Ada County Fire and Rescue District. And we, I think, given you want to move this to consent agenda, and you have a lot of other business, I'm sure to attend to. Would it make more sense than if members of the commission had questions about our application? Staff has done a good job putting it all together and characterizing it. As you know, we already have our client has impact fees with the City of Garden City. We're required by law to update our capital improvement plan. The capital improvement plan that's been presented for your consideration in May of two thousand twenty-three updates our two thousand eighteen Capital Improvement Plan, which is the current one in place, and the law requires that it be reviewed and by the Advisory Committee and with recommended changes. Mr. Colin McQueeney of Tischler By, so I believe is in the room, certainly can address any specifics of that capital improvement plan that you may have. And I'm sure as has been explained, and as you will know, capital improvement plans have to be an element in your comprehensive plan. We've worked that out with staff about and with your city attorney's office about how that would be worded and is presented before you. And we certainly are comfortable with the approach that the staff has made about how this amendment to your comp plan would be handled. And so other than that, I just stand for questions.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Gigray. So is there any member of the commission? Is there any staff member that would like to bring any questions forward? Is there a need to have this as an action item as opposed to consent? All right, no, no, looks like there's no further questions. So we'll go ahead and move that item to consent as well with the motion. So on the consent agenda, we do have the approval of the minutes from May fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-four as well as item B, sub FY two zero two four dash zero 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 three, Rees Townhomes Preliminary Plat Process as a Plan to Development. This was moved to July seventeenth, two thousand twenty-four due to noticing errors. Are there any items for further discussion? All right, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair. I move for approval of the consent agenda consisting of the minutes from the meeting of May fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four. And item B, SCP FY twenty twenty-four dash zero zero three, Rees Townhomes being moved to a date certain of July seventeenth, two thousand twenty-four. And from the new business section, part C, moving that up to the consent agenda, CPA FY twenty twenty-four zero 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 two, the Comprehensive Plan Amendment.
Thank you. I have a second. Motion and a second. Any further deliberation? All right, hearing none, I'll put this to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Now on to new business. So new business, we have two items for the public hearing. The first, A, sub FY two zero two-two dash zero 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 four, Health Estates. This is for a combined preliminary final plat process as a plan development. Scott Davis is requesting a residential subdivision consisting of thirteen residential lots and one common lot located at forty-eight hundred North Adam Street. Our three medium density residential zoning district. So again, as the format for the public hearing will follow, there'll be a presentation by the applicant followed by staff report, public hearing, rebuttal testimony from the applicant. Those of the public hearing, discussion among the commission members, and then the decision. So with that, we'll go ahead and get started with item A. Is the applicant present?
Yes.
All right, please approach and state your name for the record and your address.
My name is Scott Davis, architect with EV Studio. Our address is eight seven zero one West Hackamore Drive in Boise, Idaho. All right, is that going to go full screen? All right, good evening, commission and staff. Again, my name is Scott Davis, architect with EV Studio, eight seven zero one West Hackamore Drive, Boise, Idaho. And we're here to present the L Estates subdivision. Next screen here. I'll orient you to our site. Our site is located at forty-eight hundred North Adam Street in Garden City. That's on the corner of North Adams and East Forty-Eighth, highlighted in yellow there. It is in the heart of this residential zone in Garden City. Surrounded by a pretty substantial commercial zone. In there, we have a variety of housing types. We have townhomes, we have mobile homes, we have single-family residences in the commercial area. Commercial zone, a variety of businesses and basic services. Very close to the site and within walking distance is the Vineyard Christian Fellowship and Food Pantry. The police station is just a couple of blocks to the northwest on East Fiftieth. And the Boise Fairgrounds and Idaho Expo, not shown currently on this map, are just up the way. We are also in very close proximity to the Boise River Greenbelt Offering, walking, biking, river activities. Last I clocked it was about a three-minute walk from our site. Nestled in here in this little area is a public park, Mystic Cove Park. So this is a very vibrant part of Garden City, and we're going to be right in the heart of it, and we're happy to be so. So here's a drawing of our subdivision plat. We are proposing fourteen lots, thirteen residential, one common lot with the driveway easement shown by the hatched area. Here is a snippet of our architectural site plan, which was included in the submittal. Again, we are the R three medium residential zone. Our site area is point six-three-two acres, little over twenty-seven thousand square feet. Proposed use, single-family attached dwelling units or townhomes, as we all know them. A change from the previous submittal that we heard in March is we have we have reduced the number of dwelling units from fourteen down to thirteen to address some of the open space and parking questions that came about. We have a cluster of two different buildings. They are they are not identical. One is smaller, one is larger. There are seven three-bedroom configurations. There are six two-bedroom configurations. On the end, on the end units facing North Adams, we have distinct floor plans to address that street frontage and create a good presence and show towards the street. They are all they are all three stories with two-car private garages on the ground floor. And each unit will have a private rooftop patio accessed through internally to the townhome. Parking, I'm going to go parking real quick because that was a topic last time. With the thirteen units, we have twenty-six parking spaces required. We are providing twenty-six parking spaces via those covered private garages. And we also are required to have five guest parking, which you'll see located in the northern corner of that site. Sustainable development provisions, we are exempt from this provision in the code due to our floor area ratio being greater than one. Let me go to, here on this slide, we have an open space exhibit. I really wanted to highlight this as it was a point last time. In our zone for townhomes, for our three townhome use, require ten percent of our gross site area to be open space. And you can see those are the darker green squares, and those are the areas that meet the dimensional standards of twenty by twenty or a ten by forty open grass area. The open grass area is down facing North Adams. And we are providing twelve and a half percent or so of open space. This is designed as a passive open space, is allowed by the Garden City Code. Other landscaped areas, not really highlighted in this slide, but total of forty-three hundred square feet of miscellaneous landscaping throughout the site. And we have, we have a snippet of our landscape plan here. Along North Adams is our main street frontage. We have our required street trees. We have some screening and densification of that to hide the to screen, not hide, but to screen the driveway and the private garage doors with that open grass area. Up in the corner highlighted in here, there's an accessibility ramp, a little switchback to get up to the site and access those northwestern townhome entries, entrances. Along East Forty-Eighth Street, each one of the units does have a street presence with covered porch and entry, nice steps, nice landscaping, really making a for for really appealing street view there. We are maintaining our clear vision triangles for our access in our driveway and at the main intersection. Next, we have our civil grading plan. And I'm going to call on my colleague, Thomas Hawksworth, with C three civil engineering in just a moment here. But grading and drainage was another large topic that we talked about. And Thomas is here to expound on this. But the major change from last time is this northern corner. Back here, we have addressed the spill-off drainage by raising that corner of the site up with a retaining wall and providing a small little recessed lawn area to retain water, retain the offsite drainage. But Thomas, if you want to expound on drainage patterns, design, that kind of thing, appreciate it.
Evening, commissioners and staff. My name is Thomas Hawksworth. I'm the civil engineer for the project with C three civil engineering. Our address, one zero eight seven zero West Fairview Avenue, Suite one zero two dash one one eight seven in Boise. As, as Scott kind of mentioned, there are a couple of factors that were driving the grading design for this project. One is with the city's FEMA floodplain work maps, current work, current work maps. We're in it, we're in the floodplain from the Boise River. The, there's an established base flood elevation of about forty point five for this project. So we had to elevate the site above that. We also had to have the the goal of trying to retain the stormwater on site. So with that, we have a couple of factors. We looked at how to infiltrate the water on site. There were some challenges with the groundwater, which was historically about three feet down from grade. So in order to retain the runoff on the property, we've we've planned for a paved drain system in the middle of the of the drive aisle. This paved drain system is a permeable paver block. It's common here in Garden City installed on several projects. There's a underlying sand and gravel storage containment below it that allows the water to to be captured in that that paver section and then infiltrate down through the soil below. Infiltration rates are not are not great here. We've maintained the three-foot clearance from historic high groundwater here. That's why you're seeing that our finished floor elevations are raised a little bit higher than that base flood elevation. Most of the site will drain internal to this paved drain system in the middle of the of the townhome units. We're going to collect all of that, that that hardscape in the middle, including all of the roof runoff for the units internally into that paved drain system. There is a a small retention basin, and it looks, it looks really bigger than than it really is. For the fifty-year, one-hour storm, we're only going to have about five inches of water in that in that basin in the back. And that's really due to the challenge of picking up. You can see, I don't have a mouse here at the top. Oh, I don't know what I'm doing here. Okay, sorry. At the top, you can see little circles up in the sidewalk on the on the kind of the northeast or northwest side of of the the smaller building. We're picking up some of the sidewalk drainage in there that we just couldn't get out to the front. So we're picking up that into a shallow storm drain system that that pipes that runoff to this basin, and the majority of that that basin is capturing runoff from that landscape area. There's a little bit of landscape runoff that's that's along the frontages and and a little bit of runoff at the driveway that there's just no way to capture that on on the property. And so we presented that to ACHD, and they didn't have any feedback about accepting that drainage as it runs out to the street. That kind of generally covers the the grading design. I'm here, I'll probably turn it back over to Scott. I'm here to answer any questions you have about the grading or grading concept when it comes to the question period. Appreciate it. Thank you.
All right. Okay, okay. We have one more slide here. So this is a fence and retaining wall elevation. This is what's going to be typical on the northwest and northeast property boundaries where we are lifting the site up and we're having a concrete or mason retaining wall with a privacy fence on top. So that fence height is six feet plus the varying retaining wall height, you know, we're going to be about plus or minus eight feet along that northwest and northeast property boundary. We have a little, we have a detail section here explaining a little further. And then also down in the right side here, where we are getting into the front setback, we are dropping that fence down to three and a half feet per city code and to maintain that vision triangle coming out of the access easement. And that's about where that little ramp is. So that, you know, that's pedestrian circulation along this property line and sidewalk. And a couple of pretty elevations for everybody to look at here. The one on the top, that will be the view on Forty-Eighth Street. And same with the the one on the bottom, you know, with that really strong street frontage and street presence. And with that, I will close my presentation. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Any questions for the applicants? Mr. Brown?
Mr. Chairman, I have I have a couple of questions. Actually, I'm Mr. Hawksworth. If he would get back up here, please. You might recall, Mr. Chairman and the people that were here for the last time that this was presented. I had a lot of questions having to do with drainage. And your drainage study, which by the way is excellent. It's, there's still a couple of questions that have not been answered, and you sort of addressed them. The first one. The major drainage of the side is what you characterize as drainage area number three is is taken up by the pavers. However, yours, is it correct? Now, along with the submission on the revised submission, you converted that from the applicant from a very what I would call old-fashioned permeable pavers to a system that is called entitled paved drain, which incorporates a little storage area under each pavement. That is not reflected in your study. Is that correct?
The the paved drain system should be reflected in the new study. Yeah.
That is, it is not reflected in that. Is that correct?
I believe we did include that in the study. It spoke to a permeable paper. I think the paved drain is the is the type of material for the block.
Right.
And then the system below that is the the storage system that is included with the permeable pavement design. So it's a, it it should be within the the study for May.
It doesn't, it doesn't change what your calculations in any way, then?
It won't, no.
Paved drain, sir, is the manufacturer's name for that permeable.
Understand that. It's a little bit different than normal, but that's your answer is satisfactory. The other thing that you mentioned, you mentioned that area number four, drainage area number four, you're planning to discharge that to the ACHD right of way on both Forty-Eighth Street and on North Adams. Is that correct?
That's that's correct. The majority of that area is the landscape frontage. I, you know, in the everyday storm, there's really not going to be any runoff that goes into the right of way there. But the plan was presented to ACHD, and they didn't have any comment about that. About the the additional runoff.
Did anybody specifically ask ACHD to make a, the comment on what on that plan?
I'm not sure if they, if that was specifically asked. We've done other projects in Garden City where we've had runoff from driveways because of the floodplain elevation that you need to raise the site that they've accepted runoff and from the driveways because there's really just no way to to capture that and retain it on site.
Okay, thank you. That's the only question I have at this time.
Any other questions for the applicant? All right, thank you. All right. Now we'll hear from staff. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. And this is L Estates subdivision fiscal year two thousand twenty-two dash zero 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 four. And at the March twentieth, two thousand and twenty-four P and Z hearing, the commission did not make a recommendation action. Instead, putting the application on hold until the open space, the landscaping, the parking, as well as the drainage concerns had been addressed. Additionally, the commission recommended that the conditions provided by Land and Brown's public testimony be added to the conditions of approval. These conditions have been added, and they are highlighted in red font in that drafted decision, decision document. The applicant provided new plans on May fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-four to address the comments made at the previous hearing. And as a result, the application now proposes the removal of one of the tandem and two-bedroom units previously proposed. Thus, thus proposing a twenty point seven-five density of thirteen dwelling units on their own lots, as well as one common lot for all the common open space and common drive. And the civil plans have been updated, showing an onsite detention facility as the applicant had just announced. uh, just announced. Um, however, it does seem that there is a drainage or there is drainage going into ACHD facilities and um, in looking at ACHD's newest comment, comments provided to the city, they did not comment on, um, this proposal. Um, so that will need to be further explored and permission explicitly granted by ACHD to the city, uh, for confirmation and to the applicant. Um, the city engineer provided updated comments, uh, for the updated site plan on June tenth. Um, as part of his comments, he did say that any approval of this application uh, should be conditioned upon successfully addressing the items presented in his review. Um, his review and any significant site changes due to, um, any kind of preliminary comments that he has made um, or any drainage changes or stormwater changes would result in the application needing to come back to not only this commission, but also design review and city council for reapproval. There are a couple waivers that have been requested as part of this application. Uh, we previously have gone through a, a bunch of different iterations of waivers being requested and drafted and required. Uh, but at this point in time, only two are required. So the, the first being setbacks allowing for a zero foot side setback and a five foot rear setback to allow for, um, the shared common property boundary lines between the townhomes. Um, and as, as well as allowing for the five foot for the garages and that, that common alleyway, common drive location. Um, with that being said, though, there might be an additional waiver needing to be requested tonight based off of, um, new development, uh, regarding trash services. So today, uh, myself and Scott, um, and the Republic Services, they, we had a meeting regarding the trash cart pickup, um, and turning radius. So what originally was proposed is that the trash carts are going to be serviced on that common drive by the garages. Um, but the radius is not capable of having a, their, their truck turn around on site. So what we, um, came up with as far as a solution, and we don't have any drawings regarding this, but I will show it on, on the screen. Um, there is a common open space here off of forty eighth where the, the common drive is. Essentially, instead of trash carts, we would now be or the applicant would now be proposing a trash enclosure, um, located here at this corner at roughly a forty-five degree angle to where the, um, the truck could pull in partially and pick up the trash um, in whatever capacity in that trash enclosure. Um, so if, if the trash enclosure is proposed in this location and it is built in this location, then that would impact the open space um, square footage as well as dimensions. Um, I don't, I don't know if the applicant was able to uh, recalculate the open space provided in this, I'll call it a pizza slice uh, landscaping area. Um, but it could count towards the open space. However, it would not meet the twenty by twenty dimensional standards. So that is what the waiver would uh, be requesting is, um, the dimensional standards not meeting that twenty by twenty open space. And I can, I can let the applicant respond to that in the rebuttal. Um, but that, that was a development today. And I think with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Can Miss Veal, any questions for staff? Mr. Brown?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I have a, I have some question, Hannah. I read the engineer's comments and you mentioned them. Uh, the ones that are in there pertinent to, uh, for example, the ability to serve both water and sewer has not been absolutely demonstrated yet. Uh, there's this question about the uh, area drainage area number four, which the engineer mentions, and I already mentioned. Are those requirements that he mentioned taken care of in the requirements as the way it's drafted? The decision document, or would we have to add something in there?
Um, so in the drafted decision document, there is a there are a few different conditions regarding the stormwater and drainage needing to meet code requirements. Um, I would need to look through the general conditions to ensure that the city engineer comments are specifically covered. But otherwise, if it, if it is not in there, um, you could make a specific condition regarding his comments.
If we were going to be assured of that, then that's what we could do, right? Is that correct?
That is correct, yeah.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions for staff? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right. We have two members of the public who have signed up to testify. So again, when I call your name, please approach, state your name and your address for the record, please. So Nick McGravy?
Chairman, just as a point of clarification, I think there was only one for this application.
Oh, this one for this one, okay. All right, for clarification, there is one, this application. Justin Frieden? Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, uh, members of the commission. My name is Justin Frieden. I'm an attorney with the firm of Holly Troxel Ennis and Holly, eight seven seven Main Street, Suite two hundred, Boise, Idaho, eight three seven oh two. Uh, I'm here on behalf of our client, Bliss Properties LLC, which owns the adjacent property, the West, uh, located at forty-eight ten North Adams Street. Uh, we've submitted multiple comments, uh, and, uh, provided testimony at prior hearings uh, regarding the access and utility easements, uh, on the subject property for the benefit of our, our client's property. Uh, and we truly appreciate the time that this commission and staff, uh, as well as the applicant have taken uh, to protect those easements, uh, and address the concerns raised by my client. We thank you all for your efforts. Um, we, we thank you especially for the the inclusion of our requested conditions of approval, which were referenced by Ms. Veal, uh, which are items seven through ten in red on page twenty-one of your proposed decision document. As long as those conditions, uh, are included in any recommendation for approval, my client has no objections, uh, to this application as it currently stands. I thank you very much for your time. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any questions? All right, thank you. Is there anybody else from the public that would like to testify? Right. Seeing none, then we will hear from the applicant with the opportunity for rebuttal.
Hi there again. My name is Scott Davis, Architect E B Studio, eight seven zero one West Hackmore Drive, Boise, Idaho. Uh, yeah, like Ms. Veal stated earlier, we did have a meeting with Republic Services. Um, and currently as designed residential trash is managed through individual carts through the garage. Uh, however, the turning radius for them to back out is not sufficient. Uh, we did have a lengthy discussion about a proposed alternate. And this is not an official submittal. This was a sketch for today's hearing. Um, on this image here, you can see, um, along our driveway access, we have a dumpster sized appropriately for this development. And with access to the truck can service that and back out safely with, with minimal disruptions to any traffic, um, or coming in and out of the development. Um, it does affect the open space. Um, however, I do want to make it clear that it does not diminish the quantity nor the quality of the open space. It merely just changes the shape. Um, and that would be our proposed solution for the trash uh, collection. Um, and just a quick rebuttal on the the setbacks allowing for a zero foot side setback and the five foot rear setback. Uh, while we do concur with the five foot rear setback, which would be located, um, between the units along the common drive, uh, we do have included in our, our subdivision plat and easement for that. Um, and then for the zero set, setback, um, it's my understanding in the Garden City uh, code table eight two B dash two for the R three medium density residential zone, there is a zero foot setback for the side interior lots. So I don't think there needs to be a waiver for that. It's already built into the code. Any questions on that?
Mr. Smith?
Evening. Um, I might have just missed as you went through it, but on the open space, how does adding the dumpster not reduce the quantity of the open space? Is it being added somewhere else?
Yeah, yeah, uh, yeah. So in this image here with the dumpster, the, the open space was calculated where the dumpster was.
Right.
And it's being shifted up towards on the radius there. So, and
Oh, what was that? Oh, that was bike parking before, is that correct? So it's just eliminating three bike spots and
Yeah, we don't, we don't have any bicycle parking is not required.
Okay.
Uh, so this is as designed and as submitted with the open space, um, up on the corner. And then if I tap, tap, tap to this last one here, you can see how it has shifted towards the northwest. Uh, and it's a, I don't have the exact number on me, but it, it does not diminish or lessen the quantity nor the quality.
And will there be any type of is it just going to be a big metal dumpster or there'll be, would there be some kind of I don't know, uh, wraparound or something blocking it from the open space or is it just kind of sitting in the open?
Um, I mean, it's going to be sitting there, but it will be, you know, a CMU dumpster enclosure for protection. Um, and we can certainly provide a design element there, uh, the metal doors and gates. Um, you know, it'll be an attractive design, you know, I'll have that at the second, you know, this just happened this morning. Um, but not an uncommon detail that you'll see all over town.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? I have a question for you, Mr. Davis.
Yes, sir.
Uh, in the current configuration that you have, is there any concern about the vision triangle on the exiting traffic?
Um, no, I do. I did adjust that. So with this configuration, the curb cut did get a little bit wider to allow for easier access and that vision triangle, uh, I know it's kind of small on the screen here, um, right where my cursor is. Um, for this type of private driveway, we have a seven foot vision triangle and that is maintained, sir.
And then are you still maintaining the width required for the fire service and the engines to get in?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Yeah, um, I didn't really hit on it because, um, we do have fire marshal approval for the reduced width driveway, uh, due to the fact that the northwestern building here B is going to be sprinkled. And then there is an adjacent fire, existing fire hydrant and the fire marshal has given us written approval. And I believe that letter was included with the submittal on May fourteenth. Uh, so no reduction in the fire lane access.
Then with the new city engineered comments, are there any concerns that the changes would be required for you to come back to P and Z or design review with any of the, the comments?
No, we do not. We're confident that we can meet those with the current design. Um, the, the question about the water and sewer in the submittal, there was, you know, a wet utility plan showing running the water and sewer to this property.
All right, thank you. Any other questions for the applicant?
I have no question.
All right, thank you, Mr. Davis.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. So with that, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and have the discussion amongst the commissioners. Mr. Brown?
Okay, here's my thoughts in general and, uh, we've looked at this several times before. Uh, I wanted to commend you on responding to most of what our concerns were about. I have a couple of issues. Uh, one of them I would be interested in, and this is all sort of discussion with the commissioners. This is not much different than several others that we've seen where the question that we're, we are asked as reminded by the design consultant to address this question, then the, on, in our code for a P U D that has more than ten places, what it actually says is there's supposed to be a variety of housing types. And it lists what they do. The way we have been adjusting that is by accepting as, as was sort of pointed out by, well, it was pointed out by Hannah in the, in her report. Uh, a variety of uh, how the arrangements of each of the units are. And we've been accepting that. I'm a little bit concerned about it. I don't know what to do about it. Cause I think the way it was written, it was written so that it would apply to P U Ds that were larger. And with this, uh, larger area, what we're trying to do is we're trying to put larger than ten units in a space that is constricted. That's really the reason why they're, we're coming in and trying to do it on P U D so we can we can alter the requirements for setbacks and other things. And that's got me a little bit bothered. I, I don't know exactly how to address it. Um, I would be interested when it gets to the other commissioners, what their thoughts on this. And that moves me to the second one, and that was what I addressed in the questions. Uh, I've been concerned all along because of the drainage implications. Uh, but I would be satisfied if we were, if we decide that we're gonna for a recommendation, I would want to add a very specific requirement that prior to filing for the, and then admitting the actual plan that they, number one, will have to have some kind of a commitment that, that, that we get from ACHD. Because it's not a goal, as the, the engineers said there was a goal. It's actually a requirement that the fifty year event be retained on site. And so that being said, I think we want to specifically make sure that we get authority from that bit. And if we didn't, if ACHD and I, I don't have any idea whether they will accept it or not. Uh, I sort of think that they will. Uh, but I certainly can't say I would want that addressed. And I would want the other comments that the engineer would specifically address of, especially with regard to his comments on uh, demonstrating that they have proved that there's water and sewer available to them. And that was, should be put in a specific requirement. Other than that, I, I'll be in favor of it. Subject to our discussion, we have a lot on, on types of buildings.
Thank you, Commissioner Brown. Commissioner Shepard?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm satisfied with the changes that were made since last time with, um, reducing um, one of the dwelling units to make more space for parking and open space and I'm also okay with the waiver for the setbacks so that Hannah talked about, although the applicant said that it wasn't required. I don't I don't have that specific code right in front of me. And also with the, um, moving back and having that irregular open space lot in order to accommodate the dumpster area. I'm okay with that. Um, I'm in agreement with Commissioner Brown about the specific requirements for the drainage, you know, having ACHD accept that. And, um, as far as the variety of housing goes, I was trying to find it in here, cause I know you said in the beginning, it's, are there different bedroom sizes? Or is that, it's a question? But I know I'm a lot small. It's hard to have like a variety, like to have like a single family home. But I know I'm a lot small. It's hard to have like a variety, like to have like a single family home and townhouses and multi families, so. I. I think that this meets the objective of putting in like in like. Housing that is like urban in character. That's. What I have for it and I agree with, so as long as we have that C H D. Written in, I favor of it.
Thank you, Commissioner Shepard, Mister Smith.
I agree with all the the comments made. I I appreciate all the changes. I I think. We've come a long ways from the last time we we reviewed this. I've also been thinking about the the variety issue. I think it's a bigger concern almost collectively as we move through multiple. Series of of these types of developments, but I agree with Commissioner Shepard that I I think on a lot of size, it's. It's somewhat of an impossible requirement and I also think that you could look to the. The variety in a sense that some of the smaller units versus larger ones, that's a potentially diversity of income or. Or people could who could afford those units. So I think that 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 presents some variety, maybe not directly on point, but. But in the spirit of the the requirement, I would like to see that. That dumpster shielded in some way, it's it's right on the street and then backs up to that. Open space, so I I'd like to see something done just visually to um. To just reduce the the visual impact of that, but other than that, I am also in support of the application.
Thank you, Commissioner Smith, Commissioner Wilds.
I I I'll I'll start by saying I'm supportive and it has, this application has come a long way in the design and redesign and. As of this morning, redesign. So I appreciate, you know, kind of rolling with the punches. I think the variety of housing types issue has been this. Monkey on our back for quite a while. And we see so many of these infill applications with this issue. And. I think that we have approved. Several applications. And identified. Variety of housing types. As. Three bedroom, two bath versus two better, one bath versus four bedroom, two bath. We've identified. Very good roof lines as you know, different paint. Colors, we we have strained ourselves to try to think of what does variety of housing text? Well, I don't think it means three bed, two bath versus two bed. I don't think. I don't think this does meet the the goal. I think the variety of housing types is kind of what you were alluding to, which is trying to attract different mixed. Types of society, people who can, who want a condo, people who want a townhouse, people who can only afford to rent. And all of that can be in. A P U D. So. But I also think. The horse is out of barn on it a little bit and and we have this debate about. Every other month, probably on a different application. So. I am supportive. I agree with Commissioner Smith, the redesign with the trashing, with the trash receptacle. Is a a good. It's an adaptive approach. Given the circumstance, so I I do think it needs to be enclosed or shielded from from that public right of way. I think those. Things that have been identified by Mister Frieden's clients that is included in the draft. Decision document are important to include. So with all of that. I I I I guess the last thing I'll say about the variety of housing types. Hannah and Jenna are here, they know we struggle with this every time. I suspect city council knows that we struggle with this if. We want to fix it, we can try to fix it. As it is, I think we have. They hear us talking and they meet with applicants and talk about what might work and so far everything seems to work. It's a little bit of shoe warning. But I'm generally supportive of this application, as it stands.
Thank you, Commissioner Wilds. I'm in support of the application as well. I would echo what Commissioner Brown said. Regarding the importance of having the engineer sign off on the requirements for. The the development as well as the serve letter and making sure that A C H D is. Approving the the plans as well. It did look like within the city engineers letter, there is an assumption that there was going to be a review of some of the. A C H D, so I'd hope that that would be the case. Whether that's in motion or how you think it should read as a condition, so. I do agree with that. I think that the trash enclosure is a good way to handle the situation. That was one of my concerns, because I just didn't understand how it was going to be. Placed along the different roads and. Sounded like Republic might have been confused on how the easement was going to be used as well on the back copy line, so. I think that that's a great solution. That I agree with Commissioner Smith that there's. Think that there should be screening on it, which I think is probably code required, but. Also just figuring out if there's any way to make it so it's more attractive, since that's the entrance to your. Facility, which is kind of a bummer that you have to see that as you're pulling in. But aside from that, I I like the efforts that you've gone through to get it where it's at today. On the the unit mix or the variety of housing. I don't have a problem with this one. I don't know that there's really much that you could do in terms of. Getting too funky with it and having all sorts of different options, so it seems like you've tried to maintain different. Types of housing, two bedrooms and versus three bedrooms tandem versus. Two car garages and so forth. I think some of it too is the narrative that we get. Some of the applicants are fairly creative on how they. Describe it, which helps. But I think that from my perspective, this accomplishes it in point six acres, so. With that, I don't have any other comments. Is there any other comments from the fellow commissioners on this application? And just again, we are a recommending body to counsel on this matter. So it will be heard by counsel as well. So with that. I will entertain a motion. Mister Brown.
Mister Chairman. I move that we recommend approval. A subdivision F Y twenty twenty two, number four. L A Estates. In accordance with the finds of facts, conditions of approval and. What's the other thing? Right? And with the following additions to the draft decision memorandum. Number one, we add a variance as suggested by Hannah. With regard to the shape of the open area that is, she characterized it as a pizza pie shape. There needs to be a variance to the dimensions of that. That variance that we add a specific requirement. That the. The applicant respond to the items that were pointed out. By the city engineer and the ten June twenty twenty four. Letter specifically. Especially with special notice taken of the requirement to get. Permission from A C H D. For drainage from area number four and to address the specific issue of. Service. For sewer and water. Which he addressed in a special paragraph.
I have a motion from Commissioner Brown.
Also, and and I, excuse me, and adding a requirement for the the. Dumpster area to be specifically shielded and accordance with the. In accordance with. And approved by the staff.
Thank you, Commissioner Brown. I have a motion from Commissioner Brown. Do I have a second? Have a motion and a second. Any further deliberation? All right, hearing none. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed say no. The ayes have it. Thank you very much. Appreciate the application. All right.
Then it were three.
Yes, thank you for your patience. Are we good to continue? Okay. New business item B, S U B F Y two zero two four zero 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 two. Point Pierce Villas. Combined preliminary and final plat, Taryn K Mitchell is requesting a twelve residential lot and one common lot subdivision to be processed as a. Plan unit development. The property is currently located at four oh five and four oh nine East forty seventh street. In a R three medium density residential zoning district. So again, we will hear from the applicants and then presentation by staff, public hearing, rebuttal testimony. Close of the public hearing, discussion by the ex commission members and then the decision. When you approach, please state your name and your address for the records. Applicant, thank you.
While we're pulling this up, I'll introduce myself first. Kevin Hawk located at one two zero four four West Allen Drive, Boise, Idaho, eight three seven one three. And my name is Taryn Mitchell. TKM Architecture and my address is five three five Sawtooth Street, Mountain Home, Idaho. Today, we're going to be presenting Point Pierce Villas in front of the the commission today. This site is located in Garden City. Technology going here. Oh, yes.
I like how you made Arlo bigger than the city of Boise.
Always. Hannah, I'm sorry, is it this one? There we go.
Awesome. Take two. Can everyone see this? And if they're on Zoom? Perfect. We are happy to present Point Pierce Villas in front of the planning and zoning committee today. There's been a lot of foresight and thought that have gone into this planning. Along with two design review committees that we attended with feedback from Jenna, Hannah and the rest of the D R C staff that were very proud to present. Point Pierce Villas today. Our existing site shown right here is located off of forty seventh street in Adam Street. We have green belt access off of forty seventh street, which really allows the pedestrians of this site to. Be able to be able to utilize all the beautiful Garden City qualities that it has. Taking off down to the east side, getting utilized the new boardwalk that just went in, that is a beautiful mixed use that. Has food, beverage and grocery store components to that for pedestrians to be able to utilize. Very similar to last application, we are also down the street and green belt walking distance. To the Idaho Expo and fairgrounds as well. With this, we are actually located fairly close as well to the softball, community softball fields that are located just across the river. With that, we are zoned R three medium density. Our density limit here is at thirty point one two. We are applying for twenty five units with this. This is a P U D subdivision. One big thing that was been spoke about by the P and Z and the the application before this is the variety of housing. With this site, we are, we believe we are reaching the variety housing in a lot of different ways. One component being is we have apartments that are for rent. And then we have townhomes that will be for sell product. So this really caters to any demographic coming inside a Garden City, whether that be, hey. Just moved out of a estate and want to really see what this, you know, area is about. I can have a rental in there for a year to really get the taste and flavor of it, or if I'm ready to take that next step into homeownership, we do have. The for sale townhomes on the site as well. With this, we are asking for three variances, those being the request for interior lot setbacks. To be zero. Additionally, with that, we have the variance for perimeter landscaping to be reduced from ten feet down to five feet. And then our last waiver request is we will be serving more than four dwellings coming off of Common Drive. Getting back to the location, this is an aerial picture that's coming in from of Adam Street. As you can see right here, we're on the hard corner right there of Adams. Our parcels are just right up from this. Oh, thank you so much. Sorry, that technology. So coming right here, here's our sites right there. Looking, this is the southwest corner, looking at the site existing right now, we have one. One resident unit there in a in a mobile home. This is coming from the northwest corner of the site, looking at it, and you can see we also have one dwelling as well on the site right there. One big thing that's very important, we believe, of Garden City is it's such an infill dominant area is that. Local developers work with one another to make sure that we have as much functionality as possible. And that's two components, that's if possible, sharing driveways so we can have vehicular access. To different parts of Garden City and then one that we really take to heart is pedestrian walkways. We have worked with quad six application that has been approved. I believe they're in permitting right now, or maybe they're in their civil reviews. And we've aligned with the owner of of that site along with us to be able to bring off of two entrances to the site and two exits. So we'll have one coming off of Adam Street and then we'll have another one coming off of forty seventh street. So this allows pedestrians to be able to walk coming off of Adams, seeing through the neighborhood, cross through quad six. Come through on pathways through Point Pierce Villas and then eventually take them into the greenbelt area. Getting into the site plan a little more now, a couple of things that we wanted to make sure that we hit home on. Is first and foremost, parking, parking is gonna be an issue to some point in time in Garden City, just with with all the excitement and growth that's going on. We take parking very serious. On this site, we have fully parked it. We have a blend of garage parking along with covered parking stalls as well. Covered parking and cover parking there. Additionally, the reason why we laid out our parking the way we did is for all residents to be able to utilize parking instead of having it in one parking lot. Where they then have a farther walk to their units or their dwellings. We have located the parking throughout the site on this side there. And then the farther north sides as well. So it really accommodates, not just having a parking lot, but it's really useful for the residents that are gonna be here. Like I mentioned, as far as the variety of housing that's on here as well, we do have the for sale townhomes. Those are located on the west. End of the project and the north end of the project and then located for our for rent apartments are going to be on the south side and then the central side here. Another big piece that we really wanted to drive home is the open space, excuse me, the quality of life. Area, open space and recreation. What we have done with that is we have centralized all of our amenities. So instead of having pocket, you know, little park or a pocket bench somewhere, we actually centralized all that to bring it into the middle. And with that, we have enclosed bike parking. We are a big fan of that, is it's such a, like I mentioned before, steps away from the green belt and other areas. And with that, we have enclosed bike parking. We are a big fan of that. Is it such a, like I mentioned before, steps away from the green belt and other areas? So this allows, instead of just your normal biking racks, it allows you a little, you know, a little more bells and whistles with it. We additionally have a courtyard that is shared in the middle of our site that has bench, two benches located on the east side of that as well. Other key components that we have that really, design review committee wanted us to drive home is interacting within the community. All of our sites that come off of Forty Seventh Street have a very prominent frontage that welcomes pedestrians and residents to come off of main interior roads into their units. When we enhance that even more, what we did to make those entrances really stand out and to be very obvious, that's where you enter buildings. We have incorporated stamped concrete in front of the entrances of these. Might have a better visual here, too. Awesome. Thank you, Taryn. Getting back to the stamped concrete. So what we have is in front of all the entrances, you're gonna have your prominent, that's gonna very much tell you where to walk inside the your units. We also have stamped concrete on the perimeter of our sidewalks, getting to the remaining units inside of of the site. The other thing that we really wanted to drive home is interior circulation with pathways. We have connectivity throughout all the site. So with our mailbox being centrally located to make it easy for the post office to be able to drop mail off, get everything done with that, we have connectivity with all pathways to lead to the site from all units. One thing that we enhanced that was really good feedback from design review committee. We originally had the cluster of four townhomes on the north side, had to walk the perimeter down to get to their mailboxes. We took their feedback to heart, implemented a pathway that then gives them a pedestrian walkway over the road to access their mailbox easier. With doing that, we did have to make one change to the parking. We're still code compliant with parking requirements. We do have one compact spot. With that compact spot, it is a seven, seven foot six inch in width, and per the code, it has to be seven foot six inch width with a fifteen foot depth. We ended up keeping the twenty foot depth, so it is a compact, but it's a little more of an enhanced compact parking stall than just the traditional code requirements with it. Now with the landscape plan, I will turn over to Taryn for that. Excuse me. I think I was fighting a cold. I think it's just allergies still. So we wanted to address some of the comments that that we did receive for landscaping. And based on the feedback for or from DRC, the two DRC meetings that we had, I had to shuffle, pretty much everything moved, I guess is the the short way of saying it. So I had to shift things over two, three, four feet. And so it did change our landscaping plan from the original submission to this submission. This is the most current. And the architectural or the the site master plan mostly matches this, reflects this. So the landscaping that's provided on the site or the concept site master plan is, of course, will defer to the landscaping plan. That would be the one that 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 obviously dictates what the landscaping is. And the other item to address on landscaping would be the perimeter. And so this came up in a previous application, not the one right before this, but one with us, and that is to to really make use of the the perimeter landscaping for its intended purpose, as the ordinance is written. So we do, we did what A C H D had required of us there on East Forty Seventh Street. And so we provided an eight foot landscaping strip plus a five foot sidewalk. They've asked for an additional two feet of right of way, but that doesn't actually affect us. That's in the setback. We also have a lot of trees, so both on that right of way, we have a lot of trees on the, what is the east side. So this would be the rear. That's a fifteen foot setback. We don't have any buildings near that. But we do have a lot of trees. These trees would provide the shade canopy that the ordinance requests. What we are, one of the waivers is in the perimeter on the north and the south side. The I wouldn't say there's a discrepancy in the ordinance, it's just in how it's applied. So we would like to have a five foot setback, which is what we have. Then we have a four foot sidewalk and five or and or five foot sidewalk, but it's a ten foot. When you have multifamily, it's a ten foot perimeter that you're supposed to have. So we're asking for a five foot to match that of the setback. So because the buildings are not fifteen feet away, let's say, from the perimeter, to plant a shade tree that has a wide canopy, they would grow into the building. And it causes maintenance issues and operations issues. And so we do provide a lot of large shrubs and plantings that help provide, excuse me, the shade and the vegetation along the perimeter. But we don't have the the shade canopy, or at least the disiteration. Because we're we're concerned that it would be an ongoing maintenance problem if we were to do so. Would you mind going to the next one? So this just shows the north end. Again, the plantings there are large shrubs and and other low water consumption plantings. So that leads nicely into, you can go to the next one if you don't mind, the plantings. I'd forgotten, it's almost impossible to read it from this distance, so I'll just quickly explain. So this gives us the the list that states that we are overplanted. We have more trees than what we need. We do have more shrubs and plants than what we're required to have, and that's in the effort to meet the the spirit of the of the ordinance. And lastly, about landscaping, we're firm believers in having water wise landscaping plans. We do live in the desert. Boise and Garden City are beautiful cities. We do have a river, which is great. But we want to make sure that we are conscientious of the fact that we do live in the desert. And so we have stone aggregate and mulch surfaces. We have buffalo grass for what grass that we do have that requires, it's in essence about one sixth to one eighth the the water that a Kentucky and rye mixture would require. And, well, I could go on and on, and I won't do that. So we'll respond to any questions that we have in regards to to landscaping. So I'll pass it back over to. Thank you, Taryn. Moving on, just to show some three Ds that we have in the site that really shows the focal point of addressing the Forty Seventh Street pedestrian accesses into these units. As you can see, front doors are along all of Forty Seventh Street. With that, this is the apartment building that is for rent. So this unit right here enters in there, and then to even beef up more, the Forty Seventh Street presence, we included the balconies for level two and three to be facing Forty Seventh Street. The other thing that we did as well is these are very good sized balconies. So it's not just something that you have a door out there, we have the fence in front of you, or excuse me, a railing in front of you. These are very usable balconies with it. This is the view coming from Quad Six, which is accessed off of Adam Street, looking into Point Pierce Villas. Just something to hit on, hit home on with this is this is our enclosed parking as well, along with our garages that we have. So just allows a little more amenities for the residents. This is our site coming from Forty Seventh Street, so it's a little tough to see on the screen, but here's our stamped concrete, stamped concrete in front. We also added addressing and arrows to point where the remaining dwellings are on the site, going both ways. One important piece right here is our, essentially our information kiosk area. With that, we have located our community. Mailboxes right here. Another big thing, because the site does not offer a property management office, is it's kind of a blend of multifamily and for sale. So it's under that twenty five dwellings for multifamily, or excuse me, twenty dwellings for multifamily. So what we have done and with the blessings of DRC with the adjustments, we've put in our centralized mailbox. And then we put in an info center at this. This info center is gonna have the addresses for all the units that are inside the site with the site plan to designate, so it's very easy to access. The site will also have posted the property management sign. Property management is gonna have dictated on there as far as who to call, how to apply, all the needed items that you need. And in a modern twenty twenty four world, where there will be implemented a QR code. Today, everybody has smartphones that they utilize that to be able to gather information, and we're gonna provide that QR code on our info center with that. And then the last piece that we'll be including in the info center is Garden City Police, Garden City Fire, any emergency items that are needed that can be accessed right there for the residents. Not gonna bore you too much with the floor plans, but just a couple points of emphasis. Like I mentioned on the previous slide, we have very good sized balconies that are all over the eighty square feet requirement. Each one of our dwellings will feature that. A couple pieces that we really enjoy is that, you know, more of a hybrid lifestyle that we're living in modern world with a work from home and also working at the workplace. One thing that we have is inside all of our units, we actually have little workstation areas that are combined with the closets. Something we take a lot of pride in, so in case they have a friend, you know, someone over or whatnot, they can get into their office space and be able to work there. As you can see, we have all garage parking as well on the entry level. Very similar with this layout as well. This is our ADA compliant unit. This is the one that comes right off of Forty Seventh Street. This is the for sale townhomes. Entry level is all of your two car garage parking to be compliant with that. Second floor is gonna feature your living room, dining room, and kitchen, along with a half bath. Moving on to the third floor is gonna feature private balconies, or excuse me, two master bedrooms along with a washer and dryer in a closet in there. Yeah, this is the plat here. And then our grading plan as well. One of the questions that we had from the staff report is confirming that the Arborist is certified. So we added the Arborist certification on the presentation for that. And with that, we stand for questions.
Thank you very much. Questions for the applicants?
Mr. Brown, I have some questions. So thank you for your presentation, sir. Mr. Chairman. Are you familiar with the engineer, the city engineers' comments that were provided dated thirteen April twenty twenty four?
Yes.
Actually, there was very little
Correct.
That he could look at that had been provided to him. That included, you might have gained by watching the last presentation, that I'm quite concerned involved about drainage and what they're gonna do about that. And there weren't any drainage plans that they could review or any plans whatsoever. Are you, have you, are you aware of the requirement to maintain a fifty year event onsite?
Yes, we are, Commissioner. We we did provide civil plans with a hydrology report and drainage plan that included, so we're looking at it actually right now on the screen. And so, yes, we're familiar with all the requirements and believe that we've met them and are unfamiliar with let's say, any concern or anything from the, from the city engineer.
That apparently they weren't in the format that the engineer, are you aware that, what he says in regard to that? The only thing that was stamped that he saw was a landscape plan and and the stuff having to do with the civil work, the civil plans and drainage and ability to serve in both water and sewer. He wasn't able able to review that and give us any information about it.
I was unfamiliar with that. It's the first I'm hearing of that. So we did provide the civil plans as part of the application and hydrology report that was included in the application. The ability to serve, we we did not, don't have that quite yet. And what I did include with the application was, because we've been working so closely with Quad Six, we have the same civil engineer that's doing Quad Six. And so I asked him if there was anything that he knew of that might preclude us or cause any challenges. He said no. So I, I, even though this is a different project, included the ability to serve letter that he had received as part of Quad Six that gives fire flow volumes and water pressure. And then there was no concern at that time.
Okay, I'll, I'm gonna wait and ask the staff some questions on that.
All right, thank you very much. Now I'll hear from staff, this field.
All right, good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. This is subdivision fiscal year two thousand twenty four dash zero 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 two. The application consists of three separate parcels totaling zero point eight three acres, which are to be subdivided into a residential subdivision, as well as a planned unit development consisting of eight townhome for sale units and seventeen multifamily units with one common lot, including the common open space and landscaping, as well as the common drive. The development proposes access to the property through the common drive from East Forty Seventh Street, but it also proposes to connect to the adjacent Quad Six subdivision, as we've been discussing already tonight, which then connects to North Adams Street. So the connectivity for both pedestrians and vehicles is is pretty thorough between these two subdivisions. The property is zoned or within the R three zoning district, which is considered the high density residential zoning district. It's also within the mixed use residential future land use designation of the comprehensive plan. The development intends to meet the variety of housing types as required of the planned unit development application process by providing those two bedroom townhomes for sale, as well as one or two bedroom multifamily units. The townhomes provide for two enclosed vehicular parking spaces, whereas the multifamily units provide for one enclosed parking space with the other required parking space being under a covered parking garage type structure. As a planned unit development, the application can and has submitted waivers to code requirements. The first being setbacks, allowing for the setbacks to be zero feet interior to the development. However, the the subdivision as a whole property is meeting those setback requirements of fifteen feet for the rear, five feet for the side, five feet for the front, and twenty feet for the garages. However, Lot One, which is I'll show it on the screen. Lot One is a multifamily unit in their garage closest to Forty Seventh Street is in need of a waiver, because that garage is closer than the twenty feet to Forty Seventh Street and instead is fifteen feet. There is also a waiver to the perimeter landscaping that has been requested. Code requires that perimeter landscaping is ten feet and it consists of ten feet of landscaping. However, the the site plan is However, the, the site plan is showing five feet on both the northern and southern property boundary lines per the most recent landscape submittal, uh, which was June fourteenth, the last Friday. Um, it was technically a late exhibit and the, I was not able to review the landscape plan submitted on that date. Um, at least as far as for updating the staff report. So the staff report only includes, uh, the previous landscape plan. But I, I can get into the landscape discussion in a little bit. So as, as far as the multifamily development aspect goes, um, there is a requirement for multifamily developments to provide amenities within the property. Um, based off of how many multifamily units they're proposing, they need three different amenities from the three different categories provided. They do provide a community garden, um, which qualifies as the open space category. Uh, they do provide covered bike parking spaces, which is called out on the concept master site plan. Um, which might be able to qualify as, uh, the quality of life amenity. However, the quality of life amenity, there's burbage in there that requires enclosed bike parking versus covered bike parking. Um, so we can discuss that difference, um, here tonight and if it qualifies. Um, however, there is not a recreational amenity provided. Um, the recreational amenity is more like a sports court or, uh, a pool or a gym. Um, and that does not seem to be provided onsite. The site does provide a centralized mailbox cluster with parcel boxes and management office information, a site map and a contact QR scan code, um, as the applicant has previously mentioned. There is no onsite management office. Um, there was a similar application done by this developer team, actually. Uh, Carolyn Circle in which this was previously approved. I don't know if that rings a bell for any of you, but it is exactly the same case. Um, therefore staff has included conditions in the drafted decision document. Um, to require that, um, there is onsite services provided at twenty-four seven as well as like an emergency contact number for twenty-four seven services and bi-weekly site inspections to ensure that everything is kept up well. Those are conditions eight, nine, ten and eleven under duration of the use. And, and I'll just go over some, some of the, the basics of the application. So there is a six foot tall privacy fence proposed around the entire perimeter, perimeter of the property. Um, Republic Services has confirmed that the trash carts for the individual units can be serviced within the development. Um, a draft condition of approval has been provided requiring that the stormwater systems be built in compliant with uh, code requirements. And that there is also a condition requiring that any kind of stormwater swells incorporated into the required landscape areas um, are able to accommodate for the required trees per code. So whether it's landscape swells, um, between the sidewalk and Forty-seventh Street or onsite interior to the development, those landscape swells will need to accommodate any required trees. A draft condition of approval is provided requiring that each lot is connected to, um, city services as well as all utilities being required, uh, to be put underground. And there's, there is an existing irrigation line to, I'll, I'll call it the eastern side of the property. Um, in all other locations, this irrigation ditch is not tiled. So it is open and utilized as, um, an amenity space. However, it will need to be put underground or tiled. Um, on this property, at least where the common drive crosses over it as well as the pedestrian pathway. Um, because of that cross connection between this subdivision and Quad Six. That connection, um, and the requirement to connect to Quad Six and this subdivision was required by the city. So, um, it staff found it appropriate to, to tile the, the irrigation ditch at this location. And getting into parking, um, the site does provide the required forty-eight vehicle parking spaces. Uh, however, the dimensions were not provided on the, the site plan. Um, but there are conditions drafted to ensure that the, the dimensions are, are met. Um, and as far as the compact parking space proposed, that is also compliant because the site can have up to thirty percent of the vehicle parking spaces be compact. Um, so it is compliant with the parking code as well as, um, all the covered bicycle parking spaces they're provided for onsite. And getting back to the landscaping discussion. I'll even go to the new. Um, so, uh, the applicant presented the, the new landscape plans, which were submitted on last Friday on June fourteenth. I was able to analyze them briefly today before the hearing. And it does appear that the, the concept site master plan and the new landscape plan are, um, they do align. So all of the connections and proposed landscape areas are the same. Um, the square footages are, they seem to be the same. Um, however, there still seems to be only three varieties of trees proposed. Um, wherein the subdivision needs four, based off of code requirements. Um, additionally, there is the caliper inch trees being proposed to be, to be planted. So what I mean by that is code requires a two inch caliper tree to be, uh, planted. Whereas the proposed is one point five inches, um, which can be a pretty easy fix. Um, an update to the site plans or landscape plans. And then the southern perimeter landscaping, um, is not code compliant in that it doesn't have the shade trees required as per the perimeter landscaping requirements. Um, and I, I won't go into the northern, uh, perimeter landscaping because this doesn't technically need to have perimeter landscaping. Um, due to the fact that these structures on the northern side are not, they're not multifamily. They're, um, they're the townhome units. So being townhome units doesn't um, necessarily require perimeter landscaping other than for aesthetic purposes. It's just the southern, um, property boundary line because these structures are the multifamily units. Um, and getting into the Arborist report, uh, I was able to analyze the Arborist report and I had to have reached out to the Arborist, uh, but have yet to get confirmation about the, the health status of some of the trees that I have in question. Um, there is a condition drafted in the decision document in order to clear things up prior to removal of those trees. And, um, if they are removed prior to that determination, then they will be assumed healthy and mitigation would be required at a one-to-one caliper inch ratio, uh, which could be significant. Um, and the city has options for onsite mitigation or a tree caliper tree fund, essentially like a piggy bank fund that they can pay into. Um, with that, I'll stand for any questions.
May give us feel any questions for staff?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Brown.
I have some questions. Uh, that's, uh, first of all, let me sort of clear up and get, uh, the first question out of the way quickly. And it has to do with this landscape plan and the fact that in the staff report, you indicate that, uh, the perimeter landscaping, which you just discussed is non-conforming. Uh, that was prior to the submission of this. With submission, I realized you only had a short time to review it and you mentioned that. But based upon what you saw here and along with if we added a waiver of the ten foot setback that allowed five foot on the north and the south, would that resolve that issue?
Uh, Commissioner Brown, it would slightly or partially resolve the issue. Um, there would be the need for multiple waivers regarding the perimeter landscaping, including the, the width. So ten feet versus five as well as the tree being required every fifteen feet.
That would have to be added?
Yes.
Beyond what you already have in the draft report, is that correct?
So what is in the drafted report is the five foot allowance. So you would need to add the tree.
Okay, so it would take two of them. Uh, the next question, in the event that we recommended approval, uh, how soon would this be heard by city council?
I believe it is scheduled for July eighth for city council.
So it'd be next month.
Correct.
Um, are you familiar with Mr. Canning's report, the city engineer?
Uh, yes.
Uh, I brought that up already and I'm in to sort of explain, uh, most of the applicant's answer to my question about the plans that the city engineer did not review. Uh, I want to read from his report because it prompts us some questions that I need to have answer me. He says, "We note the project's preliminary landscape plan is the only drawing report stamped, signed and dated by the design professional. Other drawings reports needed to be stamped, signed and dated by the design professional responsible. We will not perform a review of drawings reports that are not signed by the design professional. They may be marked as preliminary, range to review or not for construction, but they must be sealed, signed and dated once submitted for agency review." That is a common thing that professional engineers and for the record, I am a licensed professional engineer. And that explains why in essentially he was not able to review the, the, the ability to serve. And he adds, uh, "We do suggest the ability to serve process be completed before entitlement approval." And he mentions that he, that he wasn't able to review any of the plans having to do with drainage, which, uh, those people on the commission know my concern to that normally. The ability to serve and the other things that the engineers expected to normally comment on and provide our help with it. So that prompts this following question. What are your thoughts with regard? Do we, uh, do we have the ability to adequately put this in requirements in the event that we recommended approval? That would make it essentially necessary would clarify for prior to the city council, the ability to serve had been satisfied and the other things that are normally submitted having to do with approval or recommendations of approval in one month. What's your thoughts on that?
Uh, Commissioner Brown, so there, there is a condition drafted, um, number eleven under prior to city signature on the plot and that the ability to serve needs to be provided. Um, however, how, what I'm understanding is that you're wanting that ability to serve to be provided before city council hears it.
Well, that's exactly what he's recommending, uh, what he is recommending there and is, is exact wording is exactly that, that prior to any approval, we do suggest the ability to serve process be completed before entitlement approval.
Uh, Commissioner Brown, that is a direct quote from the Garden City Engineers comment, um, provided. And I would say that if the ability to serve should be provided before city council makes that decision. Um, it would be a justifiable reason to postpone the application to ensure that the city can in fact serve the application being proposed. Um, also, however, with that being said, um, the city engineer will be reviewing the civil plans at a later date despite, um, the civil plans not being stamped now. And so this, the construction of this development cannot occur until he sees those civil plans and approves them.
And that, that including the plans for drainage, et cetera.
Correct. Yep.
Right. Thank you. That's all.
Any further questions for staff? Mr. Wild, so
Hannah, just so I understand, and maybe it's just because it's, um, recent in my mind. The prior approval that we had similar filing PUD didn't have bike parking because they don't do bike parking. They have a variety of housing, including apartments, so therefore they have to have parking. They have to have three amenities. Am I, am I, am I capturing the?
Yes, so there.
Follow the intent, I, I think, of the ordinance by having a variety of housing types and then get to, uh, have the bonus of having additional conditions and requirements as a result of that.
Correct.
Okay, I, I, I thought that's what I was hearing, but, uh, and I, I'm not trying to make light of it. I just, I am trying to point out that in my mind, this is better design than the one that we saw previously. In my mind, it more closely comports to a code. Intends it has better connectivity. Um, there are lots of things I like about this generally. Uh, over the other one, I just wanted trying to process that, uh, additional stuff.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments for staff?
I do have a question too. It's about the amenities and, and not having that third recreational amenity provided. Is there a waiver for that or what do we do if they don't have it provided? Because I agree with Commissioner Wild about like the design. And just being so close to the green belt too.
Um, yeah, Commissioner Shepherd, there is a condition drafted to make sure that that third amenity is provided as opposed to a waiver being granted.
And if there's no space, I mean, they have it all like spaced out pretty well. I mean, could it be like something as simple as like a cover ball or something? Or does it have to be like, because you just mentioned like a pool, gym, court.
Yeah, so the, the section of code speaks to those examples. It doesn't have to be those specifically. Um, and the way the condition, condition is drafted is that they, there's another step after this entitlement, which it goes, the subdivision goes through, um, civil plan review, final plot review and me as staff ensuring that all the conditions are met before that final plot and civil plans are approved. So when it comes to that, I would look at this condition and ensure that that recreational amenity is provided onsite and work with the applicant to make sure it meets code requirements. So it could be a sports court. It could be something that meets the, the intent and nature of that recreational amenity requirement. Unless you specify what it needs to be.
Clarifying question.
Commissioner Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, and, and having you may have already said it, I'm just tired, but echoing Commissioner Shepherd. So can we waive that recreational amenity or can we just dictate what it is or can we waive it completely?
Um, you, you can decide what you want to do. Um, obviously code is black and white and code is saying it, it needs to have a recreational amenity. Um, but as a PUD, the commission, uh, can decide that a waiver is appropriate. Um, but as a P U D, the commission, uh, can decide that a waiver is appropriate. Um, or if you want to see a specific kind of. Recreational amenity that could also be discussed.
Thank you.
Thank you, and Miss Bealwood. And the bike storage wouldn't count as recreational?
The bike storage, um, would count as, what did I say? The quality of life amenity because that section of code specifically calls out enclosed bike storage.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions for staff?
Have another questions, just a clarifying question.
Commissioner Shepherd.
And I, I hear you say that the code calls out. Pool, porch, gym, but it doesn't necessarily have to be that, but I'm hearing like activity, I'm thinking recreational, could that be something small like a? Chess table or something, because I'm just thinking like, I wouldn't want to see the whole. Like project go away because it's a recreation.
Yeah.
Not that it necessarily would, I'm just trying to understand.
Let me, let me pull up that section of code so we can. Look at it specifically. Um, I, I do not believe that the amenity space needs to. Be a specific size. Um, I mean, oftentimes we see it proposed within the common open space. Therefore also like overlapping with amenity and common open space, but the amenity doesn't necessarily need to be. A specific size. Um. But this is. Essentially all that it says for recreational amenity. Which is different than. Open space and quality of life. There is a size requirement for the open grassy area of open space. Do I need to zoom in more? Okay.
And Hannah, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that we approved one recently that was a walking trail and to qualify, we had something like a. A board. That showed some, or we had some sort of nature. Interaction on.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah, I believe that was a Carolyn Circle. And they, they had, it was actually this development team, um, they had walking trails that were more meandering in nature and. Plants with signage from what I recall and that counted as their amenity space or one of them.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for staff?
Yeah, I'm curious if the trail between quad six and. This, um. Point, pierce, my villa, it'd be a villa could qualify as a walking trail? Was it too short? I don't know. Or if they like, can you like make your sidewalks kind of like, I've seen sidewalks that had it, they don't go straight, is that a meandering trail?
I would leave that up for discussion with the commission.
Okay, thank you. I don't want to bully the point, I just. Find, figure out how they would say something like that on.
All right, anything further for staff? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right. We'll move into public testimony, so. I did receive this and this is. It says the agenda item, the name is for. Reese Townhomes. Okay, so. Is, do we have? Nick McGarvey. Available? Is Nick doing a guest? All right, I don't see anybody in the audience raising their hand as being next, should I just read this into the record then?
Um. And Chairman, I believe that that was for the application that was continued. Um.
Oh.
I think it's probably okay.
That's that one again. Right. So. Any public testimony, Zoom guests, anybody else from the public? All right. Hearing none. Then we will go ahead and give the applicant the opportunity for rebuttal. So please come up again, state your name and address for the record and go ahead and address any questions. That we may have brought up and we'll have the opportunity to ask you questions as well.
Just one piece on my end, um. Oh, apologize, gosh, Kevin Hawk, one, two, zero, four, four, West Down Drive, Boise, Idaho, eight, three, seven, one, three. Uh, one thing to address for the amenities for the recreation, um. Really appreciate the feedback on all this, one thing. I'm a millennial, I'm supposed to know this. There we go, I think that's working, yep, we're solid. Thank you, sir. Um, one thing that, um, we are open to adding for a condition of approval, um, is to meet the recreation amenity. Um, right here, connecting to quad six, we have our sidewalk that jogs north and heads west to be able to hit these other amenities. We are completely open to adding a walking trail on this site right here that would then take you up to the top dwellings as well. I think it'd actually be a really good ad, um, to, to do so, we did something very similar to a site, um, that was very close like this in Carolyn Circle. And it was really good feedback, um, so we are open to having a, a walking trail to. Meet that requirement for the recreation amenity right there. With that, we stand for questions.
All right, thank you very much. Any questions for the applicant? Mr. Smith.
Mr. Chair, um. Just one quickly, um, were we to recommend approval, um, it's probably best to send it to council with as few exceptions and waivers as possible. So on the three varieties of trees. Yeah, you said you, uh, I believe Hannah said you had two, not the three, would that be in a burden to add a third variety, is that doable?
Yeah, we can do that. I think we have three, I think we're needing four. I believe we, yeah, I believe we have three on there and that won't be an issue, we can get, yeah, absolutely.
Any other questions for the applicant, Mr. Brown? Uh, Mr. Chairman, I, I'm going back to the engineer's, uh, submission. In the event that we decided that we were gonna recommend approval. Uh, what would your, be your comment on a additional requirement in response to his recommendation? That prior. To presenting it to the city council. That you provide the necessary process completed. For, for providing the ability to serve process be completed. Is that feasible?
Yes, that is.
Um. I was gonna ask, but I think the other things can be taken care of already by the, what Hannah has suggested. Uh, so that's the only question I have. Thank you, Commissioner Brown, Commissioner Shepherd.
One more question, Mr. Chair. Um, on the waiver for the garage, I think it's lot one and it should be twenty feet, but you're wanting to put in fifty feet. That, that, that's the corner one, that's the eighty eight compliant lot.
Yeah, that is, uh, so we don't have a garage there from, um, design review one to design review two, we had swapped these buildings. So we do not, we're not asking for that waiver, um, as there's no garage entry here.
Any other questions? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
This point, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and. We'll discuss this matter between. The commissioners and again, we are recommending body for. This matter for city council, so. Mr. Shepherd.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, I love the proposal, I think you guys did a fabulous job, I think I can say that again, I feel like I remember. It's a Carolyn Circle or something. Yeah, I think I remember saying the same thing, it's really professional and really well laid out, you guys really put a lot into it, just making sure. Everything's hit that needs to be, so. I don't really have a lot of comments on it, um. I'm okay with all the waivers that you're asking for and I'm recommending approval.
Thank you, Commissioner Shepherd, Commissioner Brown. Uh. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At first I was thinking I would probably be at this point saying that I thought that. It would. I would be recommending that it be continued, but. I've been looking at and thinking about the answers that were provided and. And perhaps not, I like the development, I, I like the plans, architecture, I think it's really nice. And, uh, what you're trying to do in that, I'm quite familiar with the site. And, uh. I think that this really is be an incredible improvement for that area. Um. I am, uh, as I indicated, I'm a little concerned about. Uh, what Mr. Canning said and. So if I. If I was gonna support, and I'm, I'm leaning towards supporting this, but I would want. A couple of requirements to be added. Uh, one of them. That we work out some kind of a, a requirement that was put in and maybe. The staff would help us how to, where to put it. So that they complete their ability to serve process to show that they, uh, they can. That we can provide for the water and sewer, I suspect that it, it's going to be available there. But they need to complete that before that, because I do think it's important. That before they get an entitlement, that we have specifically addressed that for what he said and. Some kind of a requirement probably before. Approval of the plans, the final plans. That they address the other issues that, uh. Uh, the engineer mentions in his letter. Some kind of wording to that effect. And that would take care of, uh, my concerns about drainage, obviously they. They, it's the first opportunity to really look at it, but when you look at the last submission that he just started on Friday. On landscaping. Obviously, they're planning for a. A, a bio swell. Uh. To be put in part of the open area and that, and I'm quite familiar with that and that would be. Very adequate, but you gotta have more than just a drawing, that's. The engineer will have to look at. And so if they, if the engineer, I'm. If we put some kind of condition on that, I think they can probably provide what they need. Thank you, Commissioner Brown, just for my clarification, so. On the one comment you made regarding. The ability to serve. That is a condition under prior to approval of construction plans, are you thinking that it'd be? More suitable to move that into prior to city signature on flat? Probably, I would, I would ask Jenna, or Hannah, which one? Uh, we can ask that after we hear the other commissioners to see what, what the other comments are, but.
Okay, sure.
Thank you, Commissioner Brown, Commissioner Wilds.
Yeah, I, I mean, that's what I was leaning toward, ability to serve for city council review. What? City engineer's suggestion. Uh. I'm, I'm not gonna talk a lot about this, I think it's a good. I think it's a really good design, uh. I love the, um, connectivity both the best rate and. Ability for traffic to flow through here. I. Think a trail would be great, I don't think it's honestly very fair that. Uh, they have multifamily housing. And a variety of housing types to support with code and then they have additional requirements as a result of that. Where other applicants cut corners and don't always add all the things that ought to be included in a P U D. Uh, so I appreciate willingness to add a trail, I, I am going to suggest to the commission that I would be supportive of that. Addition, so I think it's a huge add. Uh. For the development itself and being that close to, um, the green development. So I'm supportive.
Thank you, Commissioner Wild, Commissioner Smith.
I agree with everything that the other commissioner said, I think it's a beautiful design, I was really excited when I opened the paperwork for it. I, I just, I think it looks great, um, I, I love the landscaping design, I love the connectivity. The whole thing just has a. Fluidity to it that I think is fantastic, so I, I, I feel like it's just a, a really professional design. I agree with, um, Commissioner Brown that to, to get the paperwork squared away on the technical side, because otherwise you'll just get delayed at the council. Stage anyway, so might as well have that done ahead of time so that we can send up. A completed recommendation up to council, um, but I recommend approval.
Thank you, Commissioner Smith, uh. Nicely done, thank you, it's nice to see these types of applications where you've put some thought into it and really have tried to. Put some touches in that I know are probably expensive, but they are fine tuned like the stamped concrete, I know you didn't need to do that, but that looks really sharp, so. Appreciate that, um, makes that area looked a lot better, so. I'm supportive, think it's, you guys did a great job and I'm supportive of the waivers. I do agree with the fellow commissioners on the serve letter, getting that sorted out. Um, I'm probably less as concerned than Commissioner Brown on the review of the other plans since. It sounds like that will be part of the process anyways before construction. Begin, so that'll be all done according to building codes and so forth, so. I'm in favor of recommending the approval, so. With that, I will open it up for any other discussion. All right. So entertain a motion. I would just think we would, I, I, I thought we'd maybe would get an attorney to do that. Uh, let me give it a shot, all right?
I'll be your second.
Yeah, that'll work. All right. Uh. Mr. Chairman. I move that we recommend approval of subdivision F Y twenty twenty four, number two. Point Pierce Villas. In accordance with the finding the fact, et cetera, that are in the draft. Uh, decision document and with the following changes. Um. Hannah already had a, a ability to serve shall be provided requirement, it was number eleven. Uh, that I think what we're trying to say is we would. Move that, so we would move number eleven, that requirement. From prior to approval of construction plans to. Be. Prior to city signature on the plat, I think that's just what their entitlement. Uh, I would ask, uh, Jenna's help if.
Um. And Chairman, Commissioner Brown, um, what I think that I may have been hearing and I know that I kind of nodded in the discussion was. Um, prior to the hearing, so it would be a separate category than would be in the decision document.
I, then, then we would have to put a additional category in there. Uh, that probably would go prior to the city signature on a plat, there would be a, a bold one there. Prior to the city council hearing that, that, that be provided.
And, and Chairman, I believe that is what I was hearing and I believe that's what the applicant agreed to.
All right. And in addition. An additional requirement that would be in the section prior to approval of construction plans. Uh. Could probably go in there for a number, in place of number eleven, and you wouldn't have to change a whole lot of water plate, so. Uh, and put in there as a condition number eleven. That a specific requirement that they, uh. The answer of the comments provided by the city engineer in his letter. Specifically provided with regard to the plans for drainage. And other related items, strong water systems, uh, with regard to strong water systems, okay? I have a motion from Commissioner Brown, thank you.
I'll second it.
I have a second from Commissioner Smith. It's been moved and seconded. Any further deliberation on the matter? All right, hearing none, all.
All right. Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any of those opposed, say no. The ayes have them. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Right. Any other items that we need to discuss tonight?
No, Chairman, number staff.
All right. Anything else? Anybody else? All right, then we will be adjourned. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.